Okay, thank you.
In with the township meeting dealing with the KY 212 budget. There can be, I'm looking for a moderator, can be from the floor, can be from any registered voter who lives in Evanston, it can be a trustee or anyone who wants to come up. Do I have any nominations for a moderator?
Nominate Mayor Tisdale.
Second.
Okay, Mayor Tisdale's been moved to second to be moderator for the township meeting. Are you ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor, signal five, let's say an aye.
Aye.
Oppose? This is Carrot, let me raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to do the best of you, best of the duty as being moderator of the township meeting for this 212, oh, I'm sorry, 211 June 13th at 8:15 PM?
I do. Thank you. First, we have a public hearing on the Evanston Township fiscal year 2012 budget. Yeah, that's on. Everyone has the budget. You have any questions or do you want to make any presentation, Ms. Vance or Ms. Wilson?
Hi, I'm Bonnie Wilson, Evanston Township assessor. I noticed in your packets that you did not get the updated revision of the assessor's budget, so I just wanted to tell you the difference. The attached budget that you now have in your hands has been revised from 148035 to It was higher in the budget that I gave you, I believe it was 152. And this represent a 1.7% increase, which is on page 468 of your packet. And there's a typo for Pete in a memo that I sent to Human Services, apparently it's got sent to you, and there's a typo for contract services to Pete Fairhood, and it's $500, not $5,000, and that's on page 489 of your packet. And I just wanted to say again that the deputy assessor's salary returns to the amount given by the previous administration, and this deputy assessor does not receive health insurance, and we no longer have a part-time contractual employee, which was $2,000, that's been removed from the budget. And I also want to mention again that because of the deputy assessor that I hired, Nick Pavletic, we have returned over $300,000 to Evanston taxpayers for exemptions that they did not receive, and many times didn't even know they were eligible for, and this has been going on for years, that my, my staff does the research and makes sure that they look into the property through the programs that we have to make sure what exemptions these taxpayers did not receive and haven't received over many years. So, I just wanted to emphasize that point, that they have helped over, returned over $300,000 to Evanston taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be brief. I just want to make the statement that according to the law, the township supervisor is to present a balanced budget to the trustees of the town of Evanston, that budget being composed of the town fund and the general assistance fund. That balanced budget has been submitted to the trustees for review. Also, I would like to make note of the fact that the township is not, and I will repeat, is not in a deficit, it's not a fiscal deficit. We have been very prudent with the dollars that we spent, and we only spend dollars when we need it, so we are not in a deficit. It is not proposed in the budget to increase any taxes. I do notice from one article, it did read about the funding of human services. One of the things that I do want to point out is that two years ago, when there was a shortfall in funds from the city, the township stepped up through its town fund with its reserves to fund those agencies at almost 300 and some thousand dollars for each year. It was stated at that time that we were using the town fund balance, and once that was gone, we would not have those funds. The proposed budget includes $60,000 from the town fund for the support of the mental health purchase of service agreements, but it also includes 86,000, 82,791 dollars from the general assistance fund. So, there's a total of 142,791 dollars that's being asked to support the mental health-supported agencies. Also inclusive within this budget is $30,000 that's being proposed for use for the summer youth employment program from the town fund, and an additional $20,000 from the general assistance fund for their newly initiated apprenticeship program that affords youth. Basically, we wanted to help fund that because we're seeing an increase in the number of 18-year-olds who are coming to general assistance. They need to be trained, they need a different avenue. So, I submit that I have submitted a balanced budget in consideration of all the needs of the general assistance office, this budget taken into account, the GA fund of the general assistance office, of which the supervisor is the chief administrator, as well as town funds, from which the supervisor's budget that basically covers the audit and the assessor's budget comes from. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Vance. Is there any questions or does anyone have any discussion of these budgets? And that, as best I understand, these meetings includes all of you out there. Alderman Rainey?
Isn't this, isn't this a public hearing on the township budget?
Yes.
Did we have a public sign-up sheet?
We had.
It's right here.
Well, I have an affidavit of electors present, me, Lovey Williamson. Did you want to speak?
I do.
All right, please do.
Thank you.
Because a public hearing is really where we let the public speak.
I know.
We can talk anytime.
Thank you Alderman Rainey, we did indeed have a sheet up here.
Good evening. I am Dr. Melovie Williamson. I live in the second ward, and I've lived there for over 40 years. I am not a special interest person, I'm not a lobbyist, I'm just a concerned citizen. And I'm coming to speak to the fact that I appreciate that office being there. It's accessible, it's very user-friendly. I stepped in there today to do some business, and it was an improved physical environment. Now, if you're going to plop it in the second ward, which was placed there some time ago, and I was a little upset about it, but I have grown to appreciate the fact that that office is there. It had an improved physical environment. If you're going to put it there, you may as well have it look nice, you may as well have it be an environment that one enjoys going into. I understand the furniture there was used furniture, but it was organized, it was, it's a concentrated service, because right next door, you have the senior service. The wait time has improved, and I don't think that I can say too much for Daryl Jefferson, I think is his name. He makes the seniors feel welcome, he helps us to get things done. So, I want you to approve the budget, to keep it looking nice, to have it organized. The recycled furniture is very nice, it's too bad they couldn't have gotten some new furniture, but the recycled stuff looks pretty good. Before, I would go in and it was kind of a hodgepodge of stuff there. In the recession, I think seniors need to have more access, they need to have less stress, and they need a physically pleasing, improved environment. So, I hope that you pass the budget as it, as it stands and not take money away from, from that particular budget. Frankly, I thought the young man who was there was very overworked. When I went there last year, I had to sit and wait in line for quite a while. So, today, it was like, wow, a breath, a breath of fresh air. So, thank you for listening to me, and I hope you leave whatever funds you have increased in that budget, so they can continue to serve the second ward in a dignified way. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Eckerstall?
Hi, I'm Sharon Eckerstall, 2519 Ashland, here to address the budget. As a, I brought out in the meeting at Human Services, I was looking over the budget for the assessor, and the three salaries amount to over $90,000 for the salaries only. My last year in office, two years ago, the budget ended at 86,000. Now, I can understand a budget increase during a reassessment year. Dr. Williamson pointed out that last year, she had to wait. Well, that was our triennial reassessment. The next two years, we don't have that activity coming into the office. But one thing we don't have also is the amount of property transfers, because our real estate sales are down. And with the economic times, so are the building permits. My office used to generate 5,000 to 6,000 permits a year and over 1,200 transfers. I doubt very much that that is going on in that office. And I would propose to either increase the deputy assessor to the level proposed, and then phase out the assistant working there, or leave both frozen at their salaries for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Wilson? All right. Sid Deschmoch? I might apologize for mispronouncing the last name.
Good evening. My name is Sid Deschmoch, and I live on 2810 Sheridan Place. And what I have to say exactly is opposite of the previous person. And the problem I have been facing for past five years is that my assessments keep going up and up and up, and every time I appeal, they come down a little bit, next time they go up again, and this has been going on for a long time. So, two days back, for the first time, I got a satisfactory answer and a satisfactory solution out of the assessor's office from a gentleman called Nicholas, and his last name is as difficult to pronounce as mine, so I don't know him, but he was very helpful. He knew exactly where the mistakes were done, and he helped me file an appeal that I hope will resolve the issues. But one thing I did notice is that he was the only person in that whole office. And I think we need more people to help more people like us, like me, like myself, and I would strongly urge you to continue not only the support you're providing him, but also maybe increase it. I don't know exact pluses and minuses in this whole budget business, but I've been very, much impressed by what I received this time. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the list of people who signed up. Does anyone else want to speak? Alderman Burris?
I just wanted to piggyback on the last comment speaker, that I've received actually several emails from ninth ward constituents saying how wonderful the, I'm sorry? Thank you. Jane's helping me with the, Alderman, helping with the last name. Nick Pavletic has been outstanding in helping them figure out their assessments. They've never understood before what was going on with their, their building, and he's just been outstanding. They've got a lot of resolution, and I've also heard from a resident that his mother went in, elderly person, and Nick really sat down, made her feel comfortable, and walked her through it. So, I think if we can do anything to try to keep Nick in that position, and I know he's been working very closely with Brinshaw, which is great for our NSP2, and possibly helpful with our economic development operation, if we can bring him in somehow to be more of a team player with our organization, that seems, you know, we hear a lot of negatives, and this has only been a positive, I've not heard one negative thing about Nick, so.
Thank you. All right, does anyone want to make a motion?
Move that we close the hearing?
City Clerk, could you?
Alderman Fisk, I mean trustee Fisk.
Aye.
Trustee Braithwith.
Aye.
Trustee Wynn.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Holmes.
Aye.
Trustee Tindham.
Aye.
Trustee Grover.
Aye.
Trustee Rainey.
Aye.
Trustee Burris.
Aye.
Nine to zero, ma'am.
Nine to zero, the public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is a roll call, beginning with Alderman Fisk.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwith. Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, we have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, June 13th, 2011, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is mayor's proclamations and public announcements. I have one announcement. I would like to thank everyone who came to the Safe Summer Summit, held at the Levy Center. It was attended by more than 200 people, and everyone got on board and got, gave ideas of things that they were willing to do to make the lives of people in the community aged 13 to 25 better this summer. And the Y, Y O U, the Y W, faith community, everyone, the schools, were very helpful, and Mr. Gainer will have a Safe Summer Plan for Teens on the webpage, listing all of the additions to what Parks and Rec is doing, that the community pitched in and did a fabulous job. So, I'd like to thank everyone on behalf of the teens, and the, the police department also did exactly what the Evanston High School students asked, and now we have a confidential, anonymous texting number, so anyone can text the police with a tip, and it will be completely confidential and anonymous. So, thanks to all involved. And next, city manager, do you have announcements?
I do not.
And city clerk, do you have communications?
No communications, Madam Mayor.
All right, next is citizen comment, and I'm sorry, but due to the number of speakers who are signed up, everybody will have one minute and 40 seconds, and my apologies. First is Kevin O'Connor, then Sharon Eckerstall, John Austin, and John Lasasso. Mr. O'Connor?
Sorry.
Mayor Tisdale, did you say a minute or a minute and 40 seconds?
A minute and 40 seconds.
Forty seconds, okay, all right, I'll try and do my.
All right, that's it.
I'm going to give my minute and 40 seconds to Kevin O'Connor, I'm second.
Thanks Sharon. Kevin O'Connor, 1227 and a half, Isabella. Evanston unfortunately is a bankrupt city. However, we continue to spend money we do not have, i.e. Agenda Item 02, giving $20,000 of our tax dollars to fund marketing for the profit of a developer who picked up the southeast corner of Chicago and Maine out of foreclosure for approximately 1.6 million. Agenda Item 03 and 04, giving $10,800 to, to businesses, I'm sorry, $10,800 of our tax dollars for facade improvement. We're broke and in debt, please stop spending money we don't have. Agenda Item H5, i.e. the $12,000 outstanding water bill at the governed golf course. Since the Human Services Committee agenda was published with barely any public notice, and Agenda Item H5 is for action, in that I would first say that the, this resolution is akin to hanging somebody for a parking ticket. As a concerned taxpaying citizen, it is important to bring some light to why the city of Evanston is interested in breaking the lease with the golf course over a $12,000 water bill, when Willmett has no problem giving the golf course plenty of time for its $8,000 water debt. I would ask this council to respond to research that has uncovered that of Evanston's 11 holes, nine holes will go to Northwestern University for its golf team to practice on, holes number 17 and 18 will go to Northwestern for tent parties for their football games, the 10th hole along Bryant Avenue, at Bryant and Central, I think Alderman Grover mentioned this, will go for parking for football. To add insult to injury, next to the 17th and 18th hole, the city of Evanston-owned property will perhaps be sold to Northwestern or someone else, and will involve the tearing down of the Chandler Newburger Center and the American Legion Hall. The council should stop cutting deals behind closed doors and let their own citizens in on their secret plans. So much for this council's alleged transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. John Austin?
Mayor Tisdale, I just, you know, I understand the rules, but when someone steps up and makes an allegation that there's been some sort of secret meeting or something that's not transpired, I mean, is there a way to address that in the rules?
I, I think you could address, well, the city manager could address who owns the golf course and.
I would love to see it too.
I'd love to, I'd love to see the proof of a meeting that I was at that I apparently wasn't at. A proof of a meeting that I was at?
All right, let's not, let's just agree, Mr. O'Connor, if you can substantiate any of what you said, we'd be delighted to see it.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, just to reiterate, the property under discussion with the golf course is owned by Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, the city has a long-term lease, there's been a sublease. The issue before us is $12,000 in water charges that are in arrears, that's the issue before us, there's a resolution on your agenda later on this evening. The Human Services Committee was noticed pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act.
We couldn't hardly hear you.
Secret meetings with Northwestern? The, Chandler Newburger is not on the leasehold that the golf course is, Chandler Newburger is on property owned by the city of Evanston. While there have been issues raised as far as the budget discussions of a number of city properties, there have been no specific discussions. I will ask the council at your July 11th meeting to have the first discussion on that subject regarding Chandler. The American Legion Hall, and Mr. Gainer is here, our, my understanding is that that is also not a part of the leasehold, is that correct or not? The American Legion Hall is on city property, not a part of the leasehold. I have been involved in no discussions, I'm unaware of any discussions regarding the American Legion Hall. That is operating separately as a private concern, a nonprofit concern.
Go ahead, Mr. Austin.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, sir. Alderman Burris?
Alderman Wynn, I couldn't hear your question, so I, I heard the answer, I wasn't sure what the question was. I'm sure, could you just repeat it? Thank you.
I asked the city manager to also address the issues raised by Mr. O'Connor about the American Legion Hall and Chandler Newburger.
Thank you, I just couldn't.
Yeah, thank you. My name is John Austin, and I live at 2801 Gerard Avenue, corner of Gerard and Isabella, so we live right on the golf course. I'm kind of late to this issue, but I'm just reading hurriedly this afternoon, this evening about it. I have, I have a question. It appears to me that the, the, the issue of the water bill is, in the grand scheme of things, a bit minor. What, what troubles me is what looks like a fairly open-ended remedy, should the powers of B decide by December 31st, as I understand it, that the lease of the, by the Golf Association can be broken. And my question is a simple one. I saw somewhere written that if the city were to take over this golf course land, just take it over and maintain it itself, it would cost more than the, the water bill. I may be wrong about that, but that's, that's my impression. That being the case, where's the fire? Why are we, why are we faced tonight with what looks like could be, and I'm not saying there's anything going on here, but what could be a fairly open-ended remedy before the fact? If it turns out that the golf course cannot maintain its, the Golf Association cannot maintain its bills, then why wouldn't that be the time to say, okay, here's the alternative, bring the alternative to the citizenry with full disclosure and full hearings, and then we'd all know what's going on?
Mr. Austin, I need you to wrap it up, please.
Okay, that's, that's my point. It's, it's a question of, of, just a fright about what could happen and why it's being done so, so quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lasasso?
Do I get a green light to start?
Consider it yours.
My name is John Lasasso. I live at 1405 Rosely Street in Evanston. I'm here this evening in my capacity as President of the Evanston-Womack Golf Course Association and representing the Executive Committee of the Association. The decision before the council this evening concerns the resolution prepared by the City Manager to hold in abeyance billings for past due invoices for water delivered to the golf course in 2009 and 2010, as well as billing for water to date and for the balance of this season. On behalf of the Executive Committee and the Evanston-Womack Golf Course Association, I urge the adoption of this resolution. Although our revenue has already fallen short of projections for this year, largely due to the weather that has adversely impacted virtually every golf course in the Midwest, our prospects for finishing this season in a sustainable or improved financial condition will require using our staff and financial resources to maintain and improve the condition and the appearance of the golf course. Continued water service and our ability to provide the labor and weed control are essential to this process. It's been pointed out that other not-for-profits have fallen in arrears on their water bills, and that of these, only the golf course continues to receive water service. But there's another way in which the golf course is unlike any other for-profit or not-for-profit water customer in the city. And that is that because the golf course continues to undertake the maintenance of the space leased by the city from the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, the city avoids an annual expense for mowing alone that we are told would approach or exceed $80,000 each summer. With this in mind, and as part of our plan to develop a sustainable operation in the future, we will submit a proposal to the City, to the City Manager, which may in time come to the council for decision.
John, could you wrap it up, please?
May I leave a copy of my statement for benefit of the... That the golf course needs a new plan and new partners is clear. There have been recent discussions with potential partners, and these discussions will continue. By the end of the season, we hope to provide a credible plan that will give the city reasonable assurance of our ability to continue to operate and initiate a capital development plan that will lead to a major reconfiguration of the golf course and its amenities. I can't wrap it up any faster than that, I'm sorry, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Steve Solomon, Nelevi Williamson, Mark Sprechter, and Amina DiMarco on Ridge Court. If the next speaker could line up and be ready to go, we could move a little faster. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Solomon, and I live at 1301 Lincoln Street. It is at the corner of Rosely and Asbury on the golf course, I'm sorry, Lincoln and Asbury. And I'm confused. It's not the first time, it won't be the last time, but at the Human Services Committee, all signs pointed to everyone wanting to help the golf course. But Resolution 37R11 talks about evaluating the terms and conditions for terminating the course lease. It doesn't set forth what those conditions are, nor does it set forth who sets those conditions. Is it the city, is it the staff, is it the council, is it the Parks District? I would suggest that more transparency might be needed, because there are a lot of us that want to help the golf course, want to do fundraising. But you know what? When we know that there is no condition, we don't know the viability of the course for the future, we're not going to help. There's also some language about investigating other uses of the property, consistent with it remaining a golf course, open land, park space. If you want to save the golf course itself, like many have said, then I'm again confused as to why we would be spending time looking at alternative uses, as opposed to trying to save the course. So, again, trying to figure out the opportunity here, the only thing that makes sense to me is that if you're investigating alternative uses, it is to sell part of the land. Anything else would cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I can't believe the city wants to take on this burden at this time. Thank you very much.
I think I'll reiterate, we don't own the land, so we can't sell the land. I hope that helps. I think Dr. Williamson is gone, I don't see her. So, Mark Sprechter?
Mark Sprechter, 2315 Asbury. I just wanted to express my opinion that I'm in favor of maintaining the presence of the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Amina DiMarco, and I'm at 1041 Ridge Court. I'm here to speak to Resolution 36R11 regarding Gray Park at Main and Ridge. I am a member of the Advisory Park Board for the city. I am also a member of the Evanston Parks Coalition, and I'm a neighbor to Gray Park. So, I'll try to make one point for wearing each of those hats. As a member of the Park Board, the timing for the redevelopment of Gray Park is appropriate in that it is in line with the strategic plan that the Parks Department has set forth for the park system. And it also would be at no cost to the city. And to that point, the Evanston Parks Coalition feels that if we, the resolution passing would go a long way in showing that the council puts their stamp of approval on looking at revisioning this park and the process of this park. And it would also show that the city is really working towards partnering with public groups to help fundraise and write grants for the city and kind of help cut costs in that department. Thirdly, as a neighbor to Gray Park, who attended the last public hearing regarding the usage of that park, there are a lot of issues in Gray Park and the usage or the usage of one group of the park. I feel strongly that a third party is necessary in this process to facilitate the revisioning of how we can look at redeveloping the space so that we can bring in more users to the park. A third party would just help in cutting down any of the anxiety anyone has, the neighbors that live in the area...
I'm sorry, I need you to wrap it up.
And the mainstream merchants. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Belen Astaron, I never pronounce that properly, Carl Bova, Madeleine Ducray, and Christine Frula.
Hi, I'm Belena Yasteran, and I'm also with the Evanston Parks Coalition, and we're here to ask you to pass the resolution supporting a third-party process for Gray Park. Basically, the reasoning behind it is that when we apply for grants, everybody wants to know if they give us the money, will the city use the third-party process? Our hope is to bring Project for Public Spaces to the Parks Department. We don't have an agenda for the park. Project for Public Spaces is a very, very, very reputable nonprofit. In the booklets that you have, you can see that the Metropolitan Planning Council of Chicago has paired up with PPS. I asked them why, they told me they're simply the best in the country. So, it's a very exciting opportunity to reframe the controversy around the park, to turn it into a public space, maybe like the Piazza San Marco over there, that brands Evanston because of its location, because of its importance to the economic development on Main Street, and its importance to just sustaining who we are as a diverse community that integrates many constituencies. So, I would really ask you for your support, and when you have time, to take a closer look at the kind of process that PPS would bring to Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Bova, 1322 Rosely Street, and this is regarding Item H5, the golf course. Quoting Mr. C.M. Cartwright, a former founding Vice President of the Golf Association, from an article that appeared in the Evanston Review, August 1st, 1946. Quote, "After its construction, the banks of the canal were never in practical use. Therefore, the right-of-way grew up into an area far from beautiful. It was a mass of rubbish, brush, and weeds, a depository of tin cans, glass, and other such material." End of quote. Thomas Leahy came along, but he failed to get the city to do anything to improve the site. Then came Peter Janz, and the course followed, after a public membership drive at $35 per person, proved to be quite a success. Quote, "It was a purely public movement for the benefit of the people." Quote again, "He was a golfer. He realized what the game had done for him and others of his generation." Quote, "He believed that golf should be a game that would be played by all. He realized that a large number could not belong to private clubs, and many did not have the transportation to go to distant clubs." Quote again, "This club is unique in all the Chicago region. It offers inexpensive golf for people of all classes." Quote, "The directors of the association have always contended that it should never be subdivided for residences. Numerous times syndicates have endeavored to buy the right-of-way from the drainage..."
Carl, I need you to wrap it up.
Will do.
Thank you.
But thus far, they have not succeeded. In conclusion, perhaps we need another $35 membership drive, and a reminder that this is purely a community golf course.
I was on the wrong agenda. I'm Florence Malazola, 2148 Pioneer Road.
Wait a second, I have Madeleine Ducray down. Is Madeleine here? Nope. All right, go ahead.
I'm President and Coordinator of Play for the Evanston Women's Golf League. This is our 40th year of playing at the Frank Govern Memorial Course. We have one member, 93 years old. We have an original member, a charter member here who's played for 40 years. We feel that, we hope you will keep the golf course, because it serves the needs of all ages. I think every child on the North Shore learns to play golf here, and it serves the purpose for those who become more older and still can play the game and learn the patience of the game. We've seen improvements in the course. They have been done with sincerity, the new bridge, the carts, and somebody said it was, it's really a jewel if it can be kept up. And we do ask you to keep this in consideration, because it is very much needed. And also, Luke Donald is number one in the world, and he played here many times.
Thank you. Christine Frula, 2801 Gerard here?
Yes, thank you. Christine Frula, 2801 Gerard Avenue, Gerard and Isabella, right on the second tee. I would like to thank my neighbors who are golfers for supporting the golf course, and I've never, I've barely ever picked up a golf club in my whole life, but I walk on the golf course, and I see my neighbors walking their dogs, playing with their children, throwing frisbees. This is a golf course that isn't just for golfers, it really does belong to Evanston. I have never been made to feel unwelcome in my walks on that golf course, and it has felt like such a shared part of the community of Evanston, the way it extends through Evanston, the way it connects us with Womack and the lake, all the things that it does for the city. So, I would like to just speak as an ordinary person, not a golfer, about how it functions as a public park, in effect, for many of us. I asked Mr. Gainer, and he informs me that water bills are not paid by city parks. I do understand, we don't own the land, the Water Reclamation District owns the land, and I also believe that the City Council has it in their jurisdiction to forgive the water bill, inasmuch as the city can see that the golf course functions as a public park. So, it seems to me, as a citizen, $12,000 is such a tiny amount of the taxes that I personally have paid over the years. And I would think that it would be in the interest of Evanston and the council to consider that as a solution, forgiving the water bill, treating it as a public park, accepting gratefully the green space, the $80,000 worth of mowing, the volunteer work that is provided by many people in support of the golf course, and using the City Council's jurisdiction to just change the status of the water bill in order to help support the golf course with a proviso, and I will, thank you, the proviso that if the golf course should manage to be profitable in a year like 1988, of beautiful hot weather, day after day after day, bowling up blue and hot, it pays back somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jamie Vahovski, Wes Needle, Padma Rao, BK Rao.
Hi, I'm Jamie Vahovski. I live at 2213 Noise Street. I'm here to represent families for Chandler Newburger. We're a group that started last month, and we're independent, community-based families who are dedicated preserving the use of Chandler Newburger as our recreation center. I want to thank Jane Grover and Mayor Tisdale for their public support of Chandler Newburger, and not to be included on a budget that would cut the services at Chandler as proposed. Our issue is with the administration proposing the closing of the Chandler Newburger Center at the end of this year. As we continue to struggle with our budget deficit, we know it's been suggested that there is a higher and greater use for this facility based on its location. We have four main concerns with this proposal. One, Chandler Newburger participant fees currently cover 93% of its expenditures. If the city can no longer afford this support, we must explore all options to reduce Chandler's reliance on this small subsidy before any consideration can be given to closing this facility. Our second concern, Chandler Newburger's mission supports critical elements of the City of Evanston's strategic plan. With almost 8,000 program and camp registrations annually, and programs serving children ages birth through adults, Chandler regularly engages Evanston youth and the young adults to become active and productive citizens of the Evanston community, as is one of the strategic plan goals. Our third concern, public gym and recreation space in Evanston is already far too limited to afford the loss of our rec center. As one of the only three rec facilities, gyms available to our youth through the Recreation Department, Chandler serves an important role in making sure Evanston remains an attractive family, attractive city for families with children.
Hey, ma'am, sorry, but you have to wrap it up.
Okay. Our fourth concern, changing the land use of Chandler Newburger site would be a short-sighted, irreversible mistake. Evanston's density and lack of available land virtually ensures that any loss of this rec space on Chandler site would be permanent, resulting in lost rec programs. Today, we had 12 summer camp programs start, over 400 participants were included, and this includes all schools and wards were represented, and we're looking for your support from all the Aldermans and all the wards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wes Needle. I live at 2670 Prairie, and I'm here for Chandler as well. I'm a graduate of Evanston Township High School, and I'm a senior now at University of Iowa, and this today was the start of my 17th straight summer at Chandler Newburger Sports Camp. I started there as a camper when I was six years old, and I went all the way till I was 12. People that I became friends with then, I'm still great friends with today, some of my best friends I met at Chandler Newburger when I was young. I lived in Chicago when I went to Chandler, and I loved Chandler so much that, and I made such great friends, that it greatly impacted our decision to move to Evanston right before high school. It also helped me greatly when I went to high school, coming from Chicago, that I had a good support group of friends. After I was done being a camper, I was a counselor in training for two years before I started as a counselor. I've been a counselor for seven years, and I'm now one of the directors at Chandler. One of the great things about it is it's been great for work stability. I started there at the beginning, after my freshman year of high school, when none of my other friends were able to get jobs, and the past few years with the economy, people haven't been able to get jobs as well. The stability I've had, being working at Chandler every summer's been great. It's really helped shape what I want to be when I grow up, working with kids all these years. Everything that I've done besides Chandler has all been volunteering with youth, and working with youth is what I want to do going forward.
Wes, I need you to wrap up.
Yes, ma'am. In conclusion, I just think it'd be very irresponsible to close a place that has been so impactful to me and so impactful to other people as well. I live in Chicago, as I said, and I could have gone to... I lived in Chicago, as I said, and I could have gone to many other places that were closer. I live two blocks from Loyola Park, but Chandler is the best there is. We have kids from all over South Evanston that come to Chandler when they're much closer than other places, but I think we do a great job, so that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I concede my time to my mother?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this ongoing surgeon comment is of two main issues. With total disregard to the surgeon's concerns, the Kendall property re-subductions was pushed through the council. One alderman was overheard assuring the developer's liar that she had the votes to do so, no matter what the surgeon say. While our reasons to object to the re-subduction are perfectly legitimate, her reasons to ignore them are shrouded in mystery. The second issue is even more bothersome. While the alderman was in closed-door meetings with the developer's liar, she kept informing...
Wait a minute, we're not, under the rules, you can't, you cannot, because aldermen can't respond. If you have a problem with a single alderman, you have to talk with them later.
May I finish it because...
If you have a problem with a decision, you can discuss a decision.
The entire council voted, Madam. The entire council voted for it and this single alderman kept telling that the developer had the right to build whatever he wants. She is not a liar.
You can discuss, you can discuss the issue without discussing an individual.
The other councilors also have to know.
You can discuss what the entire council did and you don't get, we can't attack an individual at public comments.
...of the council, okay? Say that that right is the stated opinion of the council.
This, this is the... What am I supposed to do?
The position of the council is that they, that the developer has a right to build, but nobody gave any legal citations.
Nobody gave any legal citation. They said what they said, but no citation were given and she would not reveal her basis for such information. In effect, it is like she wrote a check with no money in the bank. Now, Madam Mayor, a friendly warning...
Wait, you can discuss, can we discuss the council's decision, please?
It is, it is an analogy. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. Like if one makes a statement, it has to be backed up by a legal citation or through a liar or something. We cannot make some statements and then not back up. That's what I'm asking here. I'm not asking anything unreasonable. And based on that statement, the rest of the councilors might have voted. So that's what I wanted to know. And also, Madam Mayor, a friendly warning. Your newly interpreted three-minute rule does not permit me to give my time to my daughter to speak on my behalf. Now you and your council are stuck with me and you have to put up with me. Furthermore, I will be speaking on behalf of those 420 voiceless trees that are going to be slaughtered. I will also be speaking on behalf of the innocent children that might face car accidents due to meaningless alley configurations. So I will be loud, very loud and clear. I will not go away. I will wait for my answers, even if I have to deal with a new council and hopefully the same mayor. Thank you, Madam. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Jean Lindwall and Rosemary O'Neil.
Jean Lindwall, 625 Library Place. Implementing and enforcing a bag or tax on shopping bags is not how I want my local taxes to be spent. Over the last several years, the City Council has had to make significant budget cuts. Next year's budget process is likely to require more of the same. I would much rather see scarce financial resources used to keep Parkway trees trimmed, our elm trees healthy, new trees planted, and our city buildings clean and well-maintained. I attended the May 24 meeting on the shopping bag ban or tax proposal and was surprised to learn that no research had been done and no information was available on the economic impacts that this decision would have on either the city's budget or local businesses. Until you have a better understanding of the real impacts of this proposal, economic as well as environmental, I would urge you to drop consideration of a shopping bag ordinance completely. I carry reusable bags with me. I avoid plastic bags when I can and recycle the ones I do receive on a regular basis. I believe that education and peer pressure are much better options for changing behavior than either a ban or a tax. Let me know what else I can recycle, but please let me make the choice. I'm not interested in having the bag police in my life. How much more difficult do you want to make it for people to live, shop, or do business in Evanston? You must have better, more productive ways to spend your time in the city's scarce resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rosemary O'Neil. I live at 2044 Sheridan Road and I'm following Jean in the objection to the ordinance on the bags. With all the conditions and municipal needs of the cities in the United States, I am absolutely stunned that plastic bags would even be on the agenda or a footnote. I too attended the meeting. The city says that 100-plus people attended. The population of Evanston is 74,239. There are 32,575 households. They say, and I don't believe them, there are 428 plastic bags per person. I refuse to be labeled with that amount. I would probably receive 50 in the year and those are from Walgreens and they go back to be recycled at the Jewel. I think that it's unfortunate that we're even talking about something like this when the city has had to terminate staff. And in my opinion, I was at the meeting and this is my opinion, I think the deck was stacked for the ordinance. In discussion afterwards, the moderator mentioned that possibly there would be unannounced visits to shops for overview of bags situations. Big Brother, no thank you. Keep it somewhere else. The blowing bags in the trees, I agree, but there is an American term which applies to people irregardless of sex or age and it is slob. Maybe you'd like a 12-step program for slobs. U.S. bags are made in the United States by Americans from American National Gas. They're not from petroleum. The cost of a bag was mentioned in its part of business, just like utilities or your phone. I must admit that I left at 8:20 to go to Chamber Music at Northwestern. It was much better. But the literature that was passed out says the ordinance is one of nine focus areas. What are the other eight? I mean, is this a Trojan horse? When I food shop, I always receive paper. That's all they have on the counter. And the other shops with, with plastic, you can recycle it, the Jewel or Dominic, and a lot of people do. There are contradictions in the, in the whole thing. They want us to rinse out the bottles that we put in the glorious new blue containers, but then of course you're going to have to wash out the contaminated plastic, the contaminated...
I apologize, but...
All right, fine. I will end with a statement from the financial world. Please do due diligence.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
First item on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of the special council meeting of May 16. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of May 23. Next, Administration and Public Works Committee requests your approval of the payroll through May 22, $2,606,603.29, through June 5, $2,479,646.97. We ask you approve the city of Evanston bills through June 14 in the amount of $2,294,906.30 and credit card activity for the period through April 30 in the amount of $86,012.24. We request your approval of a contract for construction debris hauling and disposal to KLF Trucking in the amount of $144,767.50. Funding for this is through the Water Fund, Sewer Fund, and the General Fund. We ask your approval of, to purchase seven replacement vehicles and equipment for various divisions and departments from Curry Motors in the amount of $446,693.56, two Ford three-quarter ton pickups, pickup trucks with plows, and five Ford one-ton dump trucks with plows. We ask your approval of, to purchase one replacement vacuum truck vehicle for the Sewer Division of the Utilities Department from Standard Equipment Company in the amount of $399,837, less a trade-in allowance of $65,000 for a net cost of $334,837. Next item, Arbotech fungicide is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. We ask your approval of an agreement between the city of Evanston and the Evanston Police Sergeants Association for a successor collective bargaining agreement commencing March 1 through December 31, 2012. Funds associated with the settlement of the agreement are contained in this year's budget, in this year's city budget. We ask your approval also of Resolution 31R11, which is an identity protection policy to safeguard social security numbers collected, maintained, and used by the city of Evanston against any unauthorized access in use. The committee requests your approval of Resolution 35R11, which changes the IMRF Authorized Agent from Joe Ellen C. Earl, Director of Administrative Services, to Cheryl Chuku, Human Resource Management. Manager, sorry. Next item, amending the noise restrictions for construction and commercial leaf blowers on holidays is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next item is for introduction, later in the evening, it will be addressed by the committee chair for a request to suspend the rules. This is a request from the local liquor commissioner and the Administration Public Works Committee to approve a new subsection 356AA of the liquor license ordinance whereby the licensee will be allowed to operate a cafe, bar, delicatessen, and wine shop hybrids. The licensees would be permitted to sell beer and wine. The cafes may not operate as a type-two restaurant. Next is Ordinance 4101 also, and this is a request to increase the number of Class AA liquor licenses to permit the issuance to Central Street Cafe from zero licenses to the first license, in other words, to one license. Next is Ordinance 4401, which is a request to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses due to the change in ownership of Royan Sushi Bar. This is for introduction. For introduction also is a request to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses to permit the issuance to Royan Sushi Bar due to a change in ownership. The committee requests your approval also of Ordinance 28011, which authorizes the city to borrow funds from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Water Pollution Control Loan Program. The loan funds will be used for the construction of the large diameter sewer rehabilitation Phase 1 project. The, this will authorize the city to borrow up to $4 million and it is for action. For approval tonight is Ordinance 47011, which provisionally amends the following titles to the Evanston City Code. Title I, General Administration. Title II, Boards and Commissions. Title XI, Administrative Adjudication. The ordinance was introduced on May 23. We ask your approval for that. Under Planning and Development, approval is requested for a two-year time extension for an approved plan development for 31820 Dempster. This current approval expires on June 30, 2011. Next item is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. There was an amendment to this item, which is for action tonight. We ask your approval for a request for a two-year extension for a special use for the establishment of a dormitory located at 1620 Central Street, National Lewis University Pace Program Dormitory. For introduction tonight, we request you approve introduction, amending subsection 298C of the city code to require mailed notices to certain meetings of the Preservation Commission. Is this off the consent? No, this is on the consent agenda. It's just for introduction. Next, we request your approval for a special use permit, granting a special use permit for the plan development proposed at 15, 1915 through 1919 Gray Avenue. This is a project of the NSP2 program. Next for approval is, we're requesting you approve passage of Ordinance 53011, which amends various portions of the green building ordinance. The amendment provides for an appendix to address Evanston's sustainable building measures for new construction, which is part of an option for compliance with the city's goal of green building design for buildings 10,000 to 20,000 square feet. This is for action tonight. Under Human Services, we request your approval of the Township of Evanston May 2011 bills in the amount of $130,601.26. Resolution 2TR11, the Township Identity Protection request is made for you to approve this resolution, which establishes mechanisms for the township to minimize identity theft concerns by limiting access to social security numbers. For introduction tonight is the Township Budget and Appropriation Ordinance for Town Purposes for the year ending March 31, 2012. Resolution 36R11, the Human Services Committee and the Playground and Recreation Board recommend approval of this resolution, which supports the proposal of the Evanston Parks, Parks Coalition to conduct a visioning process for the design and redevelopment of Gray Park located at Ridge Avenue and Main Street. The Human Services Committee recommends consideration of Ordinance, of Resolution 37R11 regarding the city's sublease with the Evanston Wilmette Golf Course Association for the Frank McGovern Memorial Golf Course. The resolution is presented with minor revisions per instructions of the Human Services Committee on June 6, 2011. Under Other Committees, the Rules Committee recommends adoption of Resolution 34R11 and Agenda and Ordinance 36011, which has to do with council meetings being held semi-monthly. The committee has recommended that the, the city council meet three times a month. O2 is Approval of Financial Assistance for Marketing Support for the Redevelopment of the southeast corner of Main Street and Chicago Avenue. This would provide $20,000 for OMS Evanston LLC, the development team seeking to develop the southeast corner of Main and Chicago Avenue. Financial assistance will be for the purpose of funding marketing activities relating to this development of the site as a mixed-use office and retail development. Funding is from Economic Development Fund Business Attraction and Expansion Budget. The Economic Development Committee and staff recommend your approval of financial assistance for facade improvements for Bozell Imports located at 1905 Church Street on a 50/50 cost-sharing basis, not to exceed 1,400... basis, not to exceed $1,400. The Economic Development Committee and its staff also recommend approval of financial assistance for the financial improvements for Central Street Cafe located at 2800 Central Street on a 50/50 cost-sharing basis, not to exceed $9,400. For appointments, the mayor is recommending approval of the reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals of Matthew J. Rogers. Madam Mayor, with that, I conclude the consent agenda and move approval.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Holmes, we have Administration and Public Works.
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
No.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A3, I'm sorry, A3.4, approval of the Abatech fungicide. Staff recommends approval of the, I would move approval of the sole source of a purchase of 111 gallons of Abatech fungicide at $337.23 per gallon for a total purchase amount of Funding will be provided by the Funding Year 2011 General Fund Account, 3535.62496, with a total allocation of $291,400.
It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to speak to this item? Seeing no lights?
We disconnected her light.
Oh, I disconnected you all. It's been peaceful up here. I didn't know I could do that.
All right, Rodney, you're on.
All right, put your lights back on, I'm sorry. Alderman Wynn?
No, I did.
All right. I've gotten rid of you, all of you again. Oh, Alderman Burris.
Sorry. I just want to say, again, I'm opposed to this. We don't have this kind of money to spend. I know, once again, I will get outvoted when I say we shouldn't spend money, but want to get it on the record.
Thank you, Alderman Burris. All right. Seeing no other lights and thinking that this thing is turned on satisfactorily. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
My, my bad. Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
No.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Seven to two.
Seven to two, the motion passes.
Okay, um, A6, Resolution 35-R-11. Oh, I'm sorry, no.
A7.
A7, just didn't turn the page. A7, Ordinance 35-O-11, amended noise ordinance for construction and the commercial leaf blowing, leaf blowers on holidays. I would move approval, the staff recommendations, consideration of Ordinance 35-O-11, which would clarify the existence subsection of the noise prohibit, uh, I can't say that word tonight for some reason, for construction activities and commercial operation of leaf blowers to extend their prohibition specified, specified to days on Saturdays and all city, state of Illinois and federal holidays. This ordinance is presented at the request of a resident.
This is for introduction. It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to discuss this? Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, the reason it was off the consent agenda is because it did not have a unanimous vote.
All right. So we'll vote and see how it comes out now. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
No.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
No.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Five to four. Nay. Five nays, four yeses.
The motion does not pass. Five to four.
A8, Ordinance 40-O-11, enacting a new subsection 3-5-6AA of the City Code, Class AA liquor licenses. The local liquor commissioner recommends that the city council suspend its rules and introduce Ordinance 40-O-11, which permit licensees to operate the cafe-bar delicatessen wine shop hybrids. Licensees should be permitted to sell beer and wine. The cafe may not operate as a type-two restaurant. Would move approval. I move suspension of the rules, I'm sorry.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman, Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Nine to zero rules.
Nine to nothing, the rules are suspended.
Then I would move approval of the, of the ordinance.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance. And seeing no lights, City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Nine to zero rules.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Ordinance 41-O-11, increasing the number of Class AA liquor licenses to permit issuance to Central Street Cafe. The local liquor commissioner recommends that the city council suspend its rules and introduce and adopt Ordinance 41-O-11, increasing the number of Class AA liquor licenses to, from zero to one, to permit issuance to Chardonnay Wine Bar Corporation doing business as a Central Street Cafe located at 2800 Central Street. I would move suspension of the rules.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes. The rules are suspended.
I would move, I would move the approval of the Ordinance 41-0-11.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve 41-0-11. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
And, and Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. Item P2, consideration of a requested time extension for a plan development approved by Ordinance 93O-03 for property at 1710 Orington Avenue and 1717 through 1725 Sherman Avenue. Staff had recommended approval of a two-year extension. The applicant had requested a five-year extension at the committee. It was a, it was compromised at three years. So with that amendment, moving for approval of the extension at a, for a three-year time period.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance as amended. It's seeing no lights. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
And Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. And I believe everything else is passed in the consent agenda. So, we are at call of the wards. Whoops, Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, could, could we have a report from the committee as to the status of the bag ordinance? I think there needs to be some explanation. I was surprised to hear Ms. Lynn Wall make her same speech at the council when she was present at the committee level when we did otherwise than what she stated. Just have an update on...
Who would you like to have give the update?
I don't care.
How about you giving it?
Well, we, we sent it off to the Environment Board. I think, I think Alderman Burris should give the update.
All right, Alderman Burris.
At APNW, we decided, we've been motioned and we're sending it back to the Environment Board with the request that they work with the local merchants as well as the sustainability coordinator and take the information from the town hall meeting that we received. So, we want to reiterate again, the ordinance that I initially suggested was a tax on, on the bags, there was a motion from the floor that said to ban them. That was never put into the ordinance because then we decided to go to a meeting. So, I want to be very clear to everyone, there's a lot of misinformation from news sources, nothing personal news sources, as well as residents, that we are not, we are going back and we're looking at this. We're not saying to ban, there's no ordinance that says we're banning both paper and plastic bags. That is incorrect, so people are frightening you, that is not true. We are going back to the Environment Board, they're going to work, they're going to come back with an ordinance to, back to APNW to look at in October, because they don't meet in August. So, we don't have anything stated exactly what we're going to be looking at in October. We're revising it. So, all those things you're hearing are not true. We don't have any ordinance we're voting on at this point. Does that sum it up, folks?
Thank you, Alderman Burris. All right, call of the wards, Alderman Fisk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank Wally especially for coming to the first ward meeting last week, and the other staff members also who attended. It was a very productive ward meeting. We spent a lot of time talking about Royce Moore School with a representative of Northwestern University. We will continue that discussion about the future use and development of the Royce Moore property at the NU City Committee meeting, which is this Wednesday, June 15th at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Library. And Alderman Grover, I hope you can come. That would be great since it's in your ward.
I would love to, Alderman Fisk, but I believe there is another meeting that night for the Lakefront Development Committee.
You have your seventh ward meeting, okay. Well, we'll tell you what happens.
Please do, thank you.
I'm sure it will. The discussion will continue, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite.
This Thursday, I will be, be meeting with the Lake Brown neighbors at 7:00 PM at 2020 Lake Street, so I'll look forward to a meeting with the neighbors on Thursday evening.
I'll be brief, Mayor. I wanted to thank, I, I want to congratulate all the graduates in Evanston, especially the class of 2011 from Nichols Middle School, which includes my daughter Caroline Wynn Foster, and the graduates of ETHS, class of 2011, which includes my son Matthew Wynn Foster.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Bellina Estrin for the tremendous amount of work that she's done with regard to Gray Park. We, we all received some materials in a packet that she passed out today, but this is just a, for lack of a better term, a sampling of the effort and the work that she's put into this. She's organized activities, she's organized cleanup days, she has worked to apply for grants, the, the list goes on. She's met with community members, she's been engaged in a very inclusive process and, and with really, with zero funding from the city. So, that, that is tremendously appreciated by myself and hopefully by the rest of the community, and I just wanted to point that out and point those efforts out to everyone. We need more people, more people like you in the community, and I greatly appreciate that, and to acknowledge Amina DeMarco, who I know has been working with you, and our city staff who has been assisting from, in a variety of ways as well. I also want to encourage everyone to, or whoever's interested in participating in the Race Against Tate, which is this Sunday, I think Alderman Grover is going to be, and Alderman Burris will be joining us out on the race course, so looking forward to seeing everybody there. It's a tremendous community activity, you don't have to run, but it is one of my favorite events in the city, and hope to see a lot of people out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to invite everyone to, the fifth ward meeting this coming Thursday, we will be doing an exercise from Evanston 150 for Westside residents, if you want to get your input, so to be led by Dino Robinson. Also, I just want to let people know that this Saturday at 1:00 at Shorefront, there will be a, a celebration for Mr. Hutchison, who was a Tuskegee Airman. He received, his son was receiving for him a Congressional Award, and it would really, I think, you'll be there, Mayor?
I'm out of town this weekend.
Well, I'll be there.
You're fine.
And I hope everyone will come out and support them. His son lives in Rockford now, but will be there on Saturday. Also, last Friday, the mayor and I were here in the chamber at Family Focus's kickoff for their leadership program, and I mention it only because there were a lot of young people, but 12 of them took our seats up here, and they did a meeting in about fif, maybe 10 minutes?
They were awesome.
So, it's something that we, we should learn from, I just wanted to say that.
That mayor moved things along.
She moved it really, really fast, so it was really great, including, we had a city manager and clerk, so clerk, they didn't forget you either. So it was a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I would like to officially welcome Mitch Doolin and the Central Street Cafe to the sixth ward. I'd also like to, to say thank you to our Economic Development Committee for a, for a lot of help and a lot of assistance and working together to make this all happen. I think it's been a very, very well-executed and, and near-delivery project, and we look forward to opening sometime this summer, I believe, in July. And I also wanted to add to, let the residents know that the Youth Job Program, the city Streets of Sanitation will be helping to clear some of the sidewalks and alleys that are overgrown with foliage at this point for safety and security reasons. So if you have a neighborhood watch group or any other group that would like to get on the list of places to be cleared, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have some sad news and some happy news. First, condolences to our school community on the passing of Chris Short, who was a longtime teacher at, I think, three of our schools, and a beloved and extraordinary educator at Kingsley School, who died far too prematurely. So, condolences to the whole school community on that. Congratulations again to Neil Moblin and Mark Tindham for securing their civil union. We haven't met formally, but this is a good opportunity to congratulate them. Thank you to a ETHS now senior named Matthew Swartout, who has given us a brand-new roof for the picnic pavilion at Lighthouse Beach. There's the picnic area that's kind of above the beach there and is part of an Eagle Scout project. He has, over this weekend, gathered friends and fellow scouts and replaced the roof on that pavilion for us, which is a, now a great asset. So thank you for, to Matthew for that. I think it took about a day and a half of, of just the construction to do it. I don't know if you saw, but District 65 is convening a Citizens Budget Committee, beginning with six meetings over this fall, to assist it with its share of your property tax bill. With a reminder that District 65 accounts for about 40% of your property tax bill, I think participating in some of the, you have to apply for this committee, mind you, but participating in the school districts budget process, I think would be a, a good way to spend your time if you're so inclined. For more information, go to the district's website, you can always call the District 65 office for more information. And finally, the seventh ward is meeting, or whoever chooses to show up this Thursday, June 16th, beginning at 6:30 at the Evanston Ecology Center. And obviously, agenda items will include the Frank Govern Golf Course... And finally, the seventh ward is meeting, or whoever chooses to show up this Thursday, June 16th, beginning at 6:30 at the Evanston Ecology Center. And obviously, agenda items will include the Frank Govern Golf Course, Chandler Newburger, I believe Director Robinson of Public Works will be there as well. And we hope to have and give a report on a quarter of a year's worth of 311 calls and what that's looking like and all the good things and the challenges that we've seen from our 311 service. So, please join us.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to congratulate Bummel Park neighbors. They had a summer sign-up festival on Saturday. Bad weather, cold, but a huge turnout by participating organizations all over town, and they signed up a few people. And just an amazing group that organizes and does things that, you know, that most people don't do. So I just want to congratulate them on that. On Friday at 9:00 AM, anybody interested who has extraordinary skills in terms of architect, building, redevelopment, civil engineering, electrical engineering, or plumbing, a meeting is taking place regarding the redevelopment of 727 Howard Street, the future home of Polarity Ensemble Theater. We're meeting at 9:00 AM Friday morning at the outpost, 633 Howard Street. And there will be preliminary drawings, for anybody who's interested in seeing how exciting this is going to be. Next, on Friday at 1:00, right here on the second floor of City Hall, will be our first meeting for Bike the Ridge, which will be October 2nd on Sunday. We're adding an hour to the time from 9:00 to 1:00 this year. On the 23rd of June, it's a Thursday, at 9:00 AM at the outpost also, will be the advisory committee for the CTA Yellow Line Stop. So anybody interesting, interested, the public is welcome, 9:00 at 633 Howard. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burrus?
I want to say thank you to the newly-formed Ninth Ward Outreach Committee and to Dory Mendoza for volunteering to chair the committee. We have about six people on the committee and we'll be doing more, finding new ways to reach our citizens in the ninth ward. And a reminder that the Custer Street Art Fair is this weekend, the 18th and 19th, and the hours are 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, so I invite you all to come. And Yvonda Thomas is singing at the Custer Street Art Fair. I just learned. So please come down. It's really a fun time, and please check out what's going on at Piccolo Theater while you're down.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding real estate and minutes. These agenda items are permitted, subject to be considered in executive session, and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are 5 ILCS 120/2A, C5, C6, and C21.
Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Rainey.
Rainey said aye.
I said aye.
Thank you. Nine to zero.
Nine to zero, the motion passes.
Aye, sorry.